Hush up. It's a ballgame, I guarantee you. Okay, uh, call this meeting to order, roll call please.
Brian Card.
Absent with notification, oh here.
Uh, Michael Hugo.
Yeah.
Virgo Lawrence.
There.
Don Serantopoulos.
Here.
Matthew Windar.
Absent with notification.
And Keith Arlo.
Present. Uh, seating of alternates, Michael. You're being seated. Um, any addendums?
No, sir.
Citizens comments on items not subject to public hearing, anybody have any comments? Ed, you want to put your name on the record so that we all know who you are?
Okay, maybe I want to hide. It's on too many records. Ed Grandelski, Upper Maple Street. Um, Colonial Drive, it's not a town road. There should be a sign stating that. That thing, ongoing thing for I don't know how many years, so people drive by, they think it's a town road.
I don't know whose. Colonial Drive.
Colonial Drive is on Upper Maple Street.
Maple Street?
Yep. So, again, maybe that's for future reference. When you guys do something and make an approval, maybe there should be a sign on any road where there's a house that's built before it's approved by the town council.
You guys approve the roads. You should have that as part of your approvals.
It's not approved.
So, but, okay.
No, I want it not a town road.
No, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, that, I, yeah, okay, if it is, I don't mind.
Well, it just seems like you've got a better connection to the top than we do, so.
Uh, no, I think we got to look at this arena here. Um, and then regarding these performance bonds, same thing, I guess Colonial Drive. Uh, when that was originally proposed, I believe there was a performance bond attached to it. It's been extended many times, but is the performance bond sufficient for today's increase in costs and whatnot? I don't know how many years ago this was, but whenever a plan comes up for reapproval, we should also be looking at possibly increasing the size of the bond.
Escalating the bond, but to keep up.
Right, I don't know if we, if we doing that, um, but.
Who knows the answer to that?
Well, we'll ask after. Anything else, Ed?
Whatever, I mean, I, he can, maybe. Maybe not tonight, but, uh, future. Then this, um, 14-year extension from the legislator, I'm trying to understand what that really means. Does that apply to all previous permitted applications or whatever? Or I get it from Mary that it's only those that were done somehow during COVID. I'd like to get something, uh, a response to that, uh, an official, um, from the attorney. And then whenever you guys have a major approval, specifically, um, Frito Lay, 300-plus million, or 200-plus million dollars. There was no letter, or we can't find the letter from WPCA. I looked for it for a while, then there is no letter. Um, I guess you guys should require a letter from WPCA whenever you're approving whatever. If it's going to tie to the sewer, there should be a letter as part of the approval process within the.
It usually is, Ed.
So.
Well, I don't think so, it's not a requirement from, I thought so. But I'll let that go to, you know, I'd like to make that comment that a letter is not, well, it's not there with Frito Lay. And they just happen to be the biggest user of the plant and looking at the moratorium letter, their name is not on it, but everybody else is.
What moratorium?
So, the sewer moratorium. And then, um, with changes to the density, um, I guess there's, if there's no sewer, um, we're looking at, um, compact sewer treatment plants or community treatment plants and whatnot. There's a section in the state statute, there's a section in our sewer ordinance that talks about it. But I'm kind of offended in a lot of that because it talks to DEP involvement. And I didn't have a chance today to review the timeframe for DEP. But as I told the people at the battery storage facility, when they came to town, DEP had 60, 90 days to do an approval. We've got a sewer plant down here, the permit was sent to DEP March of 2022. No action. So, everybody applies, lets DEP get away with all of this stuff, but we got a major problem down here. And maybe we wouldn't have the moratorium problem had everybody put pressure on DEP. But we got all these little nuances, other things going on, and DEP responds. And somehow, I don't know, if, uh, we can do something, put a little more fire under that, but.
Well, is this something that we could start, um, annoying the governor's office?
I, you know, I've been out there for four years on the treatment plant and everything else. I've talked about DEP, and I am small potatoes, so I need help. So, I'll leave you with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Slater want to address the bonding question?
Want to make sure I understand that one of them has seen was long approvals are in place during the COVID window?
There was something about the 14 months, Jonathan was listening, so.
Yeah, it wasn't bonding, it was the length of the, the length in which it's.
He wants to know what, which applications that applies to.
Okay.
And it's, is, there is a particular timeframe, and before anybody goes for an extension, staff always checks to make sure that they're within that particular timeframe.
Which you have to do all the time because the legislature changes the statute.
The legislature, it's, there's site plans and subdivision, resubdivisions have deadlines that if you don't, with a subdivision, it's when you complete all the public improvements. Fix the road, put in your, you know, any stormwater systems, anything like that. If those are not completed within a statutory timeframe, then the subdivision or resubdivision can expire. And they, during different economic downturns, they've gone in and they'll put in a date if it's approved between this date and that date. It expires in seven years instead of five. Five has always been the normal, five years, and you can get another five years on top of it. And now there are, there's a window of time and you have to look at the statute. It's in eight dash three, and it's in, um, eight dash, I think, uh.
Three C?
Twenty, there's, for the subdivision, I think it might be twenty-six, but there's two, two sections. You have to look at it because if you got that memorized, then you, you probably should be working on Wall Street, not, not here. But the, uh, so it's 14 years for a number of different kinds of approvals, um, in a window because of the COVID, the COVID issue, so, and you just have to look at the statute.
Got to address your issue, John, Bob, Ed?
Well, that's, I don't think he's familiar with it, but whatever, I mean, um, it would be nice to, do you know, now from what he just said, what we can have?
You can get to the mic.
Microphone, please.
I guess my question is.
And you're getting names, Ed Grant?
Oh, Ed Grandelski. Uh, my question is, if, if does the 14-year extension, like he was trying to say, the legislator does, in their infinite wisdom, does it for different timeframes? So, you guys got to start reviewing every little tidbit now, every application that comes in, it's going to be, did it? At first, I was under the assumption it was 100% across the board. If you had an approved permit, what have you, the 14 limit applied to everything. Now I'm hearing it, it's, if you did something during the COVID period.
You actually have to look at the statute, it's not even as simple as that, it, I'll read it.
That's, that, yeah, see, that's what I'm saying, there's a lot more than just.
If it's been approved, um, on or after July 1, 2011, but before June 10, 2021, that did not expire prior to March 10, 2020, then that shouldn't expire before 14 years. So you have to be familiar with those dates.
Right, there's, that's why I want a little more clarification, and it's not just the, across the board from time immemorial, someone had a permit and every five years, for 100 years, they did it, you know? And it's, it's not as clear as everybody would think.
What, when such a situation like that occurs, we pull out the original file, we look at the original date of approval, and we look at the fi- the five-year.
Right, okay.
Okay, and if it meets those requirements, and I have documentation from both Mr. Slater and from Mr. Roberts, that it's an automatic, so I've looked through, we double-check it, I have Jonathan double-check it.
Well, it was just one of the discussions that I had, that's why I wanted to bring it forward that.
The maximum could be 19, if you fall in this little sweet spot, 14 you get, and then you can come in for a five-year extension.
Right, right.
It can never be longer than 19.
Make sure that we are on board with it.
Would you read that?
It, the, if, the whole thing, like, what, what applies to, or with the two, the 14 and the five?
The one that you just read?
Yeah, what it is, if it's, if it's approved after July 1, 2011, or pri- uh, in prior to, after July 1, 2011, but prior to June 10, 2021, and it didn't expire prior to March 10, 2020. If it meets all three of those criteria, then it automatically gets 14 years of length. And then the first, they can get an additional five years, uh, on request to the commission. But they can't get more than that, 19 is the maximum. Yeah, that's eight, this is recite plans, eight dash three, um, and it's down towards the M, and M, I believe. Yeah, M2 is what I read, and then there's another section for other, for other dates, so you always have to check them.
I think there's two public acts to look at, so it's 21 dash 34 and 21 dash 163. Those are two different ones, it's kind of a combination of those is what, what we have now.
Michelle Murphy, 325 Breckneck Hill Road. On the rural, in the workshop, I'm very disappointed, we brought in 160 signatures with people saying honor the P O C D. PRD is not in rural in the P O C D, which had the people's input. I understand where you're thinking, that it was in, uh, the regulations in certain things and nobody's ever done it, I get that. But I feel like this is a slap in the face to the people. Are we ever going to listen to the people of this town, honestly? I just, I'm so disappointed.
Okay, anybody else want to speak?
Bulateek Barclay, 26 Stark Glanton Hill Road. I'm gonna, um, go on what Michelle just said. Keith brought up at the, I believe at the last planning and zoning meeting, that rural development was adding, added into the PRD because of a del- the developer of, um, uh, Westview said there was no provisions for development of elderly housing. And essentially, that was added into PRD because of a developer looking out for his own best interest. So it's not always been in there, I believe it was added in 2018. Thank you.
So, let me ask you a question. So have you done any research about how many people in this community every year get elderly enough to need help? And do we have enough facilities in this town?
So that facility does not accommodate low income. Though, that facility is three, four, $5,000 for one person a month. Have you done your research about how much elderly people get on their social security and their retirement income?
Hey, I'm an elderly person that gets.
Um, some people aren't fortunate enough to have property's will to them or, um, things like that. But that was added in because of a developer. One developer came forward and suggested that be added into planned residential development for his own best interest, and that's how it happened, thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to speak to this, uh, to comments, any other comments? All right, moving on. Public comment can be made in person or submitted by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting via email at publiccomment@killenlyct.gov, mail to the Town of Killenly Planning Development Office, 172 Main Street, Killenly, 06239, or put in a drop box on the side of the town hall. Public comment will be posted on the town's website, killenly.org. As a hybrid meeting, citizens can participate in the citizens' comment by WebEx, by HTTPS, townofkillenly.my webx.com forward slash townofkillenlymy.
You don't have to read it.
And all that. Meeting number 2634545037342. Password P Z C dot meet dot 081924, do I always read this, no?
No. It's a new format.
Joined by phone 1-415-655-0001. Okay, commission and staff responses to citizens' comments. One other one, Mr. Slater, was about the bonding? Because I'm curious what, about the escalation, any kind of escalation clause and.
What you should have is, is, when you get financial guarantee for, I used subdivision example before, and you should have, uh, a, if you, somebody post, if they post a, a passbook bond and you got first security with the bank, then in, in its duration lasts as long as the subdivision, that's great. But if you get, say, a letter of credit that's going to expire in five years, should have a developer's agreement that says if they, if they don't substitute the security with something, you know, before it expires, then you should, then it's an event at default, and then you could, um, then you could call it. So, if you know the subdivision, that's the problem with these things, is they lengthen after you got the original security. But you are, you're authorized to require them to have bonding in place if they, if they want to sell lots and they, they want it to be a final subdivision plan that, for the duration of, of the subdivision. So, you, ideally, you have an agreement with a developer that they'll keep the security in place for the length of, until all the public improvements are done.
But I think the question is, like, that particular Colonial Drive was early 2000s, so cost of living escalates way over, you know, cost to do any of the work that was bonded in the original bond.
Oh, I get, yeah.
You know, is there something that we should be putting in to these bondings, um, for escalation clause or something? If it does get to this situation where it hasn't been developed over a period of years?
It's an interesting idea, I haven't seen, that's something it potentially could be in, in a developer agreement that if the subdivision exists longer than blank, I would think you'd need to get an updated estimate because it's possible there isn't a big difference.
Right, oh, yeah.
You could get an updated estimate, but that's, that's, I, I can talk to staff about that, there might be a way to do that. I've not seen that in other developers' agreement, but I have seen towns get burned because so much town has, time has gone by that, that, that the amount of bonding is not enough to cover, to cover the difference.
Okay.
And I do, I am aware that the town engineer reviews any of those agreements. So whenever anybody gives us a price estimate, it goes to our engineering department, and they have been times where they have boosted up the amount of money that the bond has to be. And the bond goes through the engineering department.
Do you have any idea of the Colonial Drive one, is everybody else familiar?
I have no idea on that one, that happened well before I got here.
No.
I know most recently Valley View, so the development on Valley View, we had, uh, bond estimates for all the phases. The first phase was started and bonds were issued. And now we're getting into the second phase and we need an updated, uh, figure for the second phase because the amount of time that's lapsed between phase one and phase two, the numbers that were originally presented in phase two aren't necessarily, um, accurate.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. So you are addressing it on a new one?
Yeah.
Public hearings, none, unfinished, new business. Request for modification of site plan, application number 19 dash 1213, KGI Properties LLC. New owners, original owner, John Z. D'Amato, Jr., and Blueville Road LLC, 41 lot subdivision, 82 Blueville Road, G I S map 63, lot 50 dash 2, G I S map 54, lot 1.1. Request for modification of site plan to allow above ground installation of the main electrical and communications line.
Why, there's a lot of rock?
Let him explain. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I did.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Paul Archer with Archer Surveying.
He's not big enough, he's got a big fat.
These are, sort of print, printed out here are the original sets that were approved to be back in 2019. And part of the approval was that.
Yeah.
Part of the approval was that all utilities were to go underground. And as we all know is, when this 42-lot subdivision was approved, the main focus of this was affordable housing. And we think, and by, I mean by affordable housing, if you look at the size of the houses that were proposed, the areas, the small, the small blocks, small lots, small density, lot of open space. So, what do we think would be a direct cost to help this project along is to allow us to go overhead instead of underground due to the fact that everybody knows that the cost of piping has escalated, concrete has escalated, sand has escalated. So to put these. To put. Sorry about that. So we feel that this would be a, a big help towards making these houses a little more affordable. The other thing that has happened that we've come across recently is dealing with Eversource, CLNP, dealing with them, they seem to prefer everything above ground, not below ground. They're talking to me about that, about how it's much easier to fix the wires. If it's underground, it's very difficult to find the broken wire, the exploded wire and everything, and it's easier to fix the transformers and all that. So, Eversource has changed a little bit about wanting above ground, they're, they're aerial service and not in the ground. And one of the big proponents that I know about going underground with this would be, you know, trees and wires and all that. Well, this, when this is built, there's no trees. The, the whole plot's going to be clear cut, small lots, roads going in. So there's going to be no trees that are going to be falling on the wires going into this subdivision. I've also driven around the area and, I don't want to say all, but 90% of everything out here is all above-ground electric now. So we feel that what we're doing on this subdivision is not out of the ordinary, it's probably in the ordinary of everything going on in Blueville right now. So what we're here for is, um, I sent a letter to Dave Capasione to feel, to see what he thought about it. We didn't hear back, I thought Dave was, I talked a little bit, they said Dave was going to be here, that maybe he could speak at that being here to see what he thought about whether or not this needs to go underground or above ground. So we feel that this would be a, a great cost savings that would be pushed right onto each of the houses to make the houses a lot more affordable. So that's why we're asking just for permission to do overhead instead of underground.
So did you get a letter from Eversource?
I did not, was not able to get anything from Eversource. I tried, but was not, not able to find anybody that, they keep, you know, they keep passing it up the line.
But it's got to happen, right?
Well, I mean, the people.
Or are we all just go along assuming that they're gonna, whatever?
So, I don't, I mean, this is what has been said to me, okay? Whether I could find the right person on Eversource to put that in writing, that I don't know. But as, the other thing is, just so everybody else knows here, changing the subject a little bit, we do have a letter from WPCA to tie this into the sewer. We have letters from, um, the water company that that's good. So, we're just looking for, I mean, so in the road right now that's going to be built, this, there'll be, there'll be sewer, water, and drainage. So we think with the electrical going above will also help in that.
You didn't include a utility worksheet on that, that I see.
That's the original set.
I know, but if you're asking for utility exceptions, you would think you'd have an utility sheet, so that'd be good.
Well, what I really want, what I really wanted to show you with is, that's the set that was approved by this commission, and it shows no utilities on that plan whatsoever. The only place it says it is if you looked on the very first page. There's a note in, in there that says all utilities to be underground. They show nothing on any of those plans as to how, how the underground is going to be done.
Is there a detail for underground?
There is not a detail for underground.
So is there any way of twisting their, um, arms?
Who, CLNP?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
You want to try the governor's office? No, that's another joke, maybe, I don't know.
But I mean, and you also want to look at, like I was watching the news today, the big thing coming out of Courtney's office is all about what they're going to try to do to make houses more affordable. What can, with rebates and this and this, and we feel that, you know, that just comes up. I think this is a great opportunity to make these houses affordable. Would be a direct cost on that going above ground and underground.
I'd be curious because it's in our regs that all, all of this will be underground. It's a point blank in the regs. So, with the, with the fortunate, uh, we have our town attorney here. On what basis can we do this?
If it specifically says it's required for all subdivisions, then I think the only alternative would be a variance. Someone could have to go and say there's some unique condition that exists that would not allow the development of property if they didn't get a variance. And they'd have to show that the circumstances are different than other properties, but if you didn't. I'm sorry, if you didn't build that into your regulations to give some, you know, some kind of exception under some criteria, then you don't have any authority to just ignore what your regs say.
So the variance would be ZBA?
ZBA.
Well, no, we, we did, we did, we did include waivers in our rules.
All right.
So the commission may waive this requirement with utility company, with utility companies determine that safe underground utilization is not feasible because of soil or water conditions or other natural man-made conditions. So, to me, without that letter, you can't get a waiver with that requirement.
And thank you, I mean, I wasn't asked to, to look that up, so.
Then, then, now you have to go ZBA, but from us, it's a waiver. Without some sort of evidence that it's a, a safety issue, I mean.
I mean, the other thing to look at, like, and not to change it up, but you, you guys should look at that, I mean, there's a waiver like that, but there's a couple places going on right now where the new fiber lines are coming in, Frontier and all that. And in these places that everything is underground, they can't go there because there's no room there now. So that's, even those guys are preferring everything above ground so that the new wires can be run. There's a, we're having a big, not in this town, but it is in Brooklyn, at the end of one of the streets that overhead it goes so far, and then it went underground, and the people on the end of that street can't get the new fiber optic line because there's no room in the tunnels down below.
Well, the only avenue, and I see it at this point, is for you to come up with a letter from Eversource. One, and or two, we change regulations, which would require, you know, to go through the process of changing regulations, which would be, you know, if you, it would take a couple months, even at the most accelerated rate.
Yeah, I, like I said, we've made several calls to Eversource, it's just to get somebody in Eversource to put, they'll tell you that, but to actually put it in writing is probably slim. You ought to just tell them you're going to promise that you'll support a rate increase. So... I don't know what to say.
Do you, does the commission wish to continue this to next month to give him time
to get a letter from Eversource, from Dave, from whoever they can get a letter from?
I mean, if you want, yeah, we can continue it. But if we got a letter from Dave and says, I mean, what is Dave, I mean... That's a legal question again.
I'd have to look at the specific, the regulation that Brian referenced.
Why don't we, why don't we just continue it? Somebody take a breath.
I'll make a motion to continue this.
Till next month, and then give time for all this to take place with either Eversource or whatever avenue. Anybody want to second that?
No.
Wait a minute.
No.
Go ahead. So, so it does speak to utility companies, so like if he were to get communication from, say Frontier, Xfinity, some of these companies that I know have been told no on some of our roads for running fiber optics, would that be supportive of the waiver? It says utility company, so they do, they do offer utility. He's not a yes.
I'm turning to the...
It's utility, and then town engineer wouldn't suffice, you wouldn't need it, you wouldn't need it from the utility companies.
A utility.
Yes.
So from the utility companies, I'm just saying that they would prefer overhead as a more efficient manner to maintain and install their products.
Yeah, the way it's written...
So for the record, Paul, you, you're saying what again? Because if he wants to speak, he needs to get up to the podium. He's one, he's one of the representative of... No, I understand that, but you know, we have to have you speak at the podium if you want to say something. Name, address.
And it's not a public hearing, he's speaking as a...
Yeah, speaking as a...
James Kylie, my address 20 Holly Road, Cheshire. No, what I was asking, so what's being stated is, is a letter from the utility companies themselves that they would prefer to both install and for future maintenance in overhead infrastructure.
It's not, it's not a preference, the rule's pretty clear, has to be a safety issue related to the installation.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the specific language says the commission may waive this, I'm reading verbatim, this is heading other utilities, page 35, section, Roman numeral four, section 11, and this important sentence says, "The commission may waive this requirement where the utility company has determined that safe underground installation is not feasible because of soil or water conditions or other natural or man-made conditions."
Right, it's a pretty cut and dry safety issue and...
Yeah.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So we'll see what we can get. So we've got a motion in a second? Do we already go through the whole thing? No.
What's the...
To continue?
Okay, the motion to continue is easy.
Second?
Second.
Second? I need further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose or extensions? Okay. So continue till next month.
We'll see what we can get.
All right. Thank you. Zone map change application 24-1336, Mark Bernard, Bernard Properties LLC, zone change from low density to build commercial for the following properties, 350 Hartford Pike, 328 Hartford Pike, 319 Hartford Pike.
Nice.
This is just for a receipt, and then it'll be scheduled for a hearing for next month. And next month's date will be?
Mr. Slater, a question for myself. I work with Mark Bernard as a realtor agent in the same agency, should that be considered a conflict, and I should recuse myself?
So your, your, your business, actually, in business together?
We work under the same broker, we're independent agents, I don't...
Well, the question is whether or not you get any financial, have a personal or financial benefit, or that the person would perceive you, perceive that you are so close with that person that you...
I don't want to cause a problem, so I would rather recuse myself.
I think it's a safe, it sounds like it's a close enough relationship that people would question it, so I think it's probably safer to accuse yourself.
Brian, finish taking this over.
What are we doing here? We're not doing anything.
All you're doing is receiving.
You're receiving it and scheduling a hearing for next month, which would be September 16th.
It doesn't even say that. Okay, are we making a motion to receive and schedule for next month?
I didn't create, didn't create this agenda, I was not here this week.
Wow.
Man, she opens.
Right out of there.
I see the tire marks.
I trust your guys' knowledge on what you need to do, so...
Apparently not. A motion to accept, anyone to receive, schedule? Thank you, second? Awesome, all in favor say aye. Aye, great, next, we want, back to you.
Abstain.
You abstained.
Whatever.
You were accused, you're in the hallway.
I'm accused, there you go.
So are we scheduling for a hearing?
Next time I'll be in the hallway. It's a lot of work.
Yes, we just received and scheduled for here.
Okay.
Sure.
Adoption of minutes, July 15.
No, no, no.
I'm missing now.
Jump right over me.
Informational purposes, oh!
The only reason he showed up.
Sorry about that. Informational purposes, Attorney Slater will discuss the resolution establishing a moratorium on wastewater treatment connections.
Sir? Well, a little bit, it's going to be perhaps a little bit of workshop discussion in terms of what best practice you might want to go forward with that, but you're probably all aware, but if not, the WPCA determined that they are very close to being at their maximum daily design capacity, and as a result, they are not going to be allowing most connections. There's a moratorium in place, they're applying to expand facilities, there's no timeframe for how quickly they think that's going to happen. So the ordinance was adopted, my understanding there's going to, there's likely to be an amendment to it, but basically the way that it works is other than a variety of very specific projects that are listed, you know, there's a restaurant proposed at, you know, 536, 542, 552 Hartford Pike with a projected capacity of 1860 gallons per day. They've got a list of a handful of particular projects that will qualify, but after that, other than those...
Qualify for what?
A connection to the sewer system. So there'll be no more new connections to the sewer system except for, until it's expanded, other than a list of a handful, and then in instances if someone has a septic failure and they're able to connect to the system, it's better to have that happen, so that's allowed, or in some instances, you know, there could be something that the, the, the WPCA can determine is necessary for public health and safety, but by and large, you can't get a new connection. So the, and actually, if you want to clarify that, Ware Road and Cardinal Drive are not listed currently, right? And that's...
Ware Road and Cardinal Drive are not currently listed on the moratorium, they are meeting this month for the amendment, and the amendment will include those two because they did have letters, it was a script nuzr that they were left off.
So that'll get fixed, but there's, there's other instances, and when I say workshop, what I didn't do, save taxpayers' nickel, is go through every section of your regulations, but it's easy for you in a situation where someone, as a requirement of an approval, has to demonstrate that they, they have approval to connect into the sewer. But if you don't have that in a section of the regulations, then it's probably a, a good idea to make sure applicants know about it, and that part of that's going to come from, from staff, but awareness on the part of the commission, and I don't know whether or not you want to, you know, make announcements about that, whether that's, whether that's necessary, but do every, all of your commercial sections of your regulations, is it a requirement to submit something from the WPCA ahead of time for approval? Because if not, theoretically, we'd not have to approve.
We've just, we've just redone our, our applications, and they have, they're under review to make sure that all that's in there, and to make sure that we have the proper fees in place and whatnot. So we do have a listing of things, and one of them is the WPCA, and either they have to at least have the application in process, that they've submitted their letter, or that they've gotten their approval. It's all part of the application now.
But ideally, you don't want to waste your time and their time. The truth is, it's kind of like getting a, you know, approval from OSHA or DOT, I mean, you go ahead and you approve, they don't want to say anything to anybody until all the local approvals are in place. Well, it's possible you approve a, a project, and then when it gets to them, they say no. And so, you know, if your regulations didn't require it, you'd still have to process the application and you'd approve it, and then they wouldn't get their connection and the development would never happen. But it'd be nice not to waste your time to go through that whole exercise and review a plan.
Or their time.
And their time, exactly.
Well, and our, our approval letters also have an obligation paragraph at the bottom saying that even approval through us does not remove any obligation on your part to go before any other local, state, or federal agency that you need to get approvals from.
Which is a good practice to have. But I thought it was important for you all to know about, to the extent that you didn't already know about that, that that's in place right now, the moratorium is in place, subject to the amendment, and that'll come up.
As staff, we can't stop anybody saying that there's a moratorium, you can't put your application before the board, that we still have to allow them to come before the board.
Right. And we'll very strongly recommend you have a completely faulty site plan application or subdivision application. Staff can't just say, "This doesn't meet the regulations," deny, you run a grave risk that that would get considered automatically approved for failure for the commission to act. So if somebody comes in and the, the new application requires the WPCA sign off, and they don't have it, then the proper processes would put it on your agenda, act on it and deny it because it didn't comply with that section of the regulations, rather than not even proceed with it. So you still have to process it. If someone, if someone's educated, they, they shouldn't want to waste their time either if they're not going to be able to get a connection. So presumably, they're going to know about it from the application form, from land use staff, et cetera, and you're not going to see that application that wouldn't qualify. But it, but if for some reason somebody decides to come in and do one, and they, they don't have that WPCA author, approval, and it's required on your application, you would need to not deny it. And if you didn't have any regs, you'd have to approve it, but it wouldn't, ultimately it wouldn't matter because they wouldn't get the WPCA connection and the project couldn't go forward.
So two questions. Number one, so if a person, if one of the couple mills down here puts an addition on, or anybody puts an addition on, do they get way, permission from the sewer treatment plant for the additions?
That's not...
So like, it was brought up, like Frito-Lay, they, they are additions, and they have to do the application for that?
That's, the moratorium applies to expansions of facilities as well.
But I'm saying, I'm just asking if normally, if without the moratorium, if they...
Every time we have anything like that, be it commercial, any, your packet gets delivered also to the town engineer, and we talk to him, and we have like a staff technical review for things that are missing, and oftentimes, what will happen is, Dave will call them and say, "You need to go to WPCA." Or we'll say, "Is this something that you're connecting to the sewer?" And then we refer them back up to Dave.
So it depends on basically what the addition is, as to whether it has an impact on...
Correct. If it has an impact on to the sewer or not.
All right, so number two, if an applicant comes in with a new facility of any type, and they can't hook up to the, to the WPCA, can they, or do we have to allow them the opportunity to build an onsite system?
Well, it would be a function of what, if your regulations specifically address it, but if all your regulations provide is that they have adequate, adequate wastewater treatment, and they get DEP approval for a large system, then ordinarily, that would, that would meet your, your regs. But again, I would want to look at, just like Brian helped me out before, when, you know, I, I didn't know about that, that particular regulation, you know, it'd be a function of looking at it and making sure that there isn't something that mandates that it has to be through, through a municipal system. But typically, it's just, you need adequate wastewater services, and if it gets approved by DEP or it gets approved through WPCA, they, under most regulations, would qualify.
Well, it'd just be good to know, because I know, I'm hearing that, that other, well, I'm hearing from the health department that that's a waiver within the town. So it hasn't kind of addressed that.
That's something that I know that is still trying to be figured out, because that's one of the items that Jonathan, when this first started to come about, that we raised. What happens if you're saying they can't do a connection to the sewer, and we're thinking of a residence sewer, but they get approval from NDDH? Are they allowed to do the NDDH? And that's something that, that's still being under consideration.
But then even then, after...
Because we have some requirements in how far away you are from...
But you have to connect.
That you have to connect. So it's just like, what, what happens at that point? And nobody, at this point, we're, you know, staff can't make that decision, you can't make that decision, it has to be made somewhere along the line.
Well, that's the question, and then it also becomes, if somebody does go ahead and build a septic system, and then five or 10 years down the road, you know, they cut the capacity again, you know, but how do you treat it then?
And that all is probably going to be addressed, or have to be addressed, on the, on the town ordinance side as opposed to on, on your side, because there are sections that say that, you know, you've got to connect, so they're in a, you know, rock and a hard place because they can't have a new connection, but they're in the area where they have to. So whether there's going to be tweaks in that for some window of time to, to allow for just that, so if somebody invests all that money in a new system, that they shouldn't have to be required to connect in later on. But it's, we're all in brand-new territory, this is, you know, just adopted, and, and then they hope that, you know, they'll be able to find a way to expand, to expand the facility, so that's not going to be an issue in, in the future, but it's not going to happen right away.
Anything else?
Did I cover stuff that you wanted to?
So, so currently, like, we don't have it for most of our zoning regulations, requirements to connect. So like, for an as-of-right use, like a single-family house, happens to be within 200 feet. On, on a zoning standpoint, I could require them to provide proof of connection or some sort of waiver, but it would also be defendable to deny because quite simply, they're not meeting the health metric. Personally, I, I looked at this, and I, I'm thinking, it's really business as usual in terms of an application. If an applicant comes forward and they say, "I want to do a subdivision or something else, and it's going to require me to connect," a condition of the approval is getting approval from the WPCA, and if we're still in the moratorium, they're not getting that approval, but, well, they're not getting the go-ahead to move forward, but they have an approval that's good for five years. It can be extended up to 10 years under the current system. But I think it's very important on, on staff's part, or generally for the public, to know that there is not currently an avenue without the WPCA agreeing for your connection. But it, it would be wrong from us on a staff standpoint to say an application is not complete because our regulations don't support it, and we don't have forms that require connections, proof of connection, or anything like that. Somebody comes through with an application, I think our, our regulations require you to hear it. And really, in that process, they, it needs to be clear, they don't have the ability to connect unless the WPCA says that they can. It's really no different from on, as-of-right use, where somebody's proposing a septic system. They might show it on their plan, "I'm not approving the septic system, it's the local health department that approves the septic system." If ultimately, they deny it, they can't move forward. But I don't think it's as, I don't think it has to be as complicated as some people have made it.
So who makes the decision whether they can build a septic system in? Within the town?
The ordinance says that if you're within 200 feet, you have to connect. That's an ordinance.
Right, so, but if they go through the process, and they can't connect...
Then they could go for a variance, I guess.
Would it have to be a ZBA thing?
I think the ordinance has to get fixed, because the ordinance, if they, if there is a contemplation to allow people that are in an area that currently demands, before this moratorium, demands that you connect, and now the moratorium, moratorium comes in and says, "We can't give any more new connections out," someone's going to have to seek to carve out any ordinance to be able to say during the more, this moratorium period, if approvals are obtained through either the, the local public health department or DEP, depending how big the system is, you know, that, and it would have to accommodate, I would think, what, what you're talking about, which is you spend all the money putting a septic system in, and then the sewer system gets, gets expanded, presumably, the ordinance changed, if it's ever changed, would have some kind of a grandfather provision in it. But as of right now, there is no, there is no loophole for one of those that's, that's that close. It would be, either has to get approved, and they can't do it, depending on what your regulation says, as Jonathan said, or if there's a basis in your regulations to deny because they can't prove they can get a connection. Whatever the case might be, under your regulations, you should just... provision in it, but as of right now, there is no, there is no loophole for one of those that's, that's that close. So, it would be, um, it either has to get approved, and they can't do it, depending on what your regulation says, as Jonathan said, or if there's a basis in your regulations to deny because they can't prove they can't get a connection. Whatever the case might be under your regulations, you should just process it the way the regulations are written.
Okay.
Anything to add for the council, is the one that does the ordinance?
The ordinances, yeah.
So, what's up in there, Ian?
Say if we add, um, say someone comes before the commission, um, it meets all, excuse me, it meets all of our requirements, would it behoove the commission when the approval letter or the recording, the approval letter decision, recording notice, we have a paragraph saying, "Moratorium in effect as of such and such," um, for the connection? Therefore, unless, until you get the approval, like, can people, because this is what we were thinking of, that people would be coming in for applications to say, "Well, if I'm first, if my application gets approved and all I need is my connection, then I'm first in line for the connection when it gets opened up again." Is that something that we could put on and just say, "Moratorium currently in effect, you can't build or construct?"
What you could have is a requirement that says that you must demonstrate if you are in, in that area. And by the way, as you said, town ordinance, WPCA might have, depends on, on where it is. It might be a DE, WPCA decision that could allow some of that to happen to, not all, not necessarily the council, but back to your, your point. If you had the regulation specifically mandate that they, that if you are in an area where you have to be served by a sewer, you must demonstrate authority to connect in order to get an approval, in which case, you folks can deny. But if not, people, I think, could get in line, get their, it doesn't mean they're the first ones to be able to connect, that's all up to the WPCA, but they could go through the exercise of getting approved and sit on their application and, and wait until the time that the system opens up and they can get a connection. It all, it's all how your regulations read now, and how, and how you, if you want to address this issue in the meanwhile, and the regulations don't specifically require proof of a connection, you could add that to your regulations if you want to be able to deny them. I frankly don't think, I mean, if it, if it meets the requirements and somebody wants to go through, like, a single-family home and get their approval and get signed off on, um, and they can't get the connection, and, you know, maybe it's not anybody's wasted time, they're just investing in the future, so it's really, I, I could see you guys going either way, but it's got to be what's in the regulations.
John?
I got it. So... I do have one question, though, or comment, is, uh, you know, it's going to take a number of years before that sewage permit gets updated and stuff. Yeah, ten years? A lot can happen, and if you... If somebody comes in today and says, "I'm going to build this," and it meets all the, you know, dots the i's, crosses the t and everything, ten years from now, a lot can change. Are we putting ourselves at risk or anything to say, "Yeah," you know, without it being updated at that time, that it's still a good plan?
By state statute, when you approve it, it's exempt from changes in your zoning, changes in the regulations after the, after the approval.
So, it's, it's good as of that day, but ten years from now, a lot can change, and it might not be as good.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about a single-family home, but if, but if a, a site plan came in for commercial development or a subdivision came in, those are the ones that have the protection that if there are changes in the regulations during that, we were talking about that fourteen-year period, whatever the period is for it to survive, if during that period of time regs change, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to, it's, it's subject to the regulations at the time it was filed.
Would it be a good idea to think you agree now and then ten years from now? Hey, you agreed it ten years ago, why isn't it good now?
Things have deadlines. Um, well, as Burgess pointed, things have deadlines, but a site, even if it's a commercial, if, if it's as right in that they're going through a site plan, we're very limited on our review. But the site plan itself, all work is supposed to be completed within five years. If it's not completed within five years, they can come back and they can ask for a continuance. And I think we have that five-year point where we can review, because the continuance isn't an automatic continuance. I do believe that's right.
That's correct.
It's, so if something happens that, and we, we look through the site plan, and they say, "No, you can't have the continuance," or we can say, "We allowed you to go the five years, but the moratorium is still in effect, and we don't know when it's going to go," so, do we have that?
Right, you have discretion on whether or not to give the extra five years.
John?
So, so from a day-to-day standpoint on, um, applications, maybe not subject to the commission, it really behooves us of, uh, to try to, um, make sure that it's illustrated that there's an condition that the WCBA or the Health Department, regardless, has to agree to connection, uh, because that's the key point for the health aspect. But if somebody's very adamant, "I'm going to connect because I can connect," um, it is, it would be grounds for denial, uh, quite simply because, um, it's a health aspect under the zoning. The real question that I would have, though, is if the council doesn't take action on the ordinance, could it be deemed a taking, not as a subject of zoning, but because of the ordinance? Because ZBA can't grant a variance for the ordinance.
Of course not, yeah. I'm not going to comment on that.
Okay.
How's that? I'll, I'll say this, if somebody could try to make a claim to that.
Okay.
But it's a high board, Bert, you have to show that you, you have, your land has no...
No functional use.
Yeah, you, you're deprived of all use.
How did, how did this happen? We just got done putting an addition on. That hasn't been completed for how long?
Ask the Sewer Authority.
Two years?
No, it's been longer than that, yes.
It's been longer than two years?
Yeah.
It's probably been about twenty years since they started, you know, with the plantings for the addition.
It's a true change from when they, originally, back in the nineties, when they used to say that our plant was so big, we could never run it all efficiently because it was, we never had a...
When it was first built?
It was way overbuilt.
Yeah.
And then we had the burn plant, and then that was never used because it was not efficient, we couldn't produce enough waste to burn, so we always hauled it away. And now then, the last update was just an update to meet DEEP regulations, and didn't, didn't really address sizing. When it just, they tore down the burn plant, I don't know what else they did, I just, limited knowledge of what you hear over the years.
And they're facing DEP, DEEP violations if these, if, if they don't stave off these new, new, too many more increases, so they're kind of, they're kind of forced into doing this.
Okay. Anything else for this portion?
It's the only good news I was asked to share.
You're choking, Mike.
All right? Now I can move on?
And I'll move on as well. Have a good night.
Good night, thank you. Okay, workshop minute, meetings, meeting minutes, July fifteen, and regular meeting minutes. And a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve both the workshop and the regular meeting of July fifteen.
Or a second?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Alterations, adjustments? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose or extensions? Continuation of workshop? It looks like you got it scheduled for September sixteenth. So, I guess that's when we'll have it, September sixteenth.
Right, we don't need to bless it with a motion, right?
I might not be here, so that would be a blessing, but... Zoning practice correspondence, zoning enforcement officers report. Anything, Jonathan?
Uh, nothing to add. We will have a ZBA meeting, uh, in September, I've already received two applications.
Economic development?
Um, the new Imperial Room, I assume the location of the old Imperial Room has now opened. The Dow Building will be doing a ribbon cutting on September third, no, fifth, sorry, for four businesses, one new one, and three expansions. Emerald Buddha is now open for business at one fifty Main Street. Our next Small Business Academy will be October one through November fifth, from six to eight at the library. The Box Culvert Project on Furnace Street will, uh, start, they'll start working on that on October one. That was kind of the, the catalyst that was, uh, stopping the Brickyard Project, so that'll help unstick that. And our next EDC meeting is September third, and we'll be meeting with the superintendent in schools to discuss ways the business community can support academic success to attract businesses and workforce to the area.
Motion to adjourn?
You got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, go right by, I apologize.
From the town council meeting, um, we had the calls, um, of service from the, um, Troupte and the Killingly Con- Constabulary. The Constabulary's taken about one-third of the calls, and there's about two thousand three hundred calls each quarter. For fall events, uh, the Parks and Recs wants to do, um, a series of, of events because there's other towns that, um, have events, um, like, around Labor Day and, um, in, in October, so they want to have it for about a, a, um, two-week period. The Owen Bell Dredging Project is going well. They, um, removed the turtles and, um, a huge snapping turtle, and the fish have, um, moved to the other area with water. Killing Memorial School, the renovation, um, is almost complete. And, um, Killingly was denied any, um, federal funding for the sewer expansion.
On what grounds?
I guess we're not important enough.
No, it, it had to do with, um, the lack of a community match in the capital stack.
What's that mean?
Well, we, there wouldn't be a community match because it's going to...
So, we had put in, Dave Cap and I had put in for design with Joe Courtney, and, uh, for construction for Senator Murphy, and we were asking a hundred percent of the funding to come from the federal government. So, in a recap on that application, we were asking, "Why didn't we get the money?" And it was our inability to show a community match, um, so...
Oh, you meaning we have to pony up some of the money?
Something. We were asking for a hundred percent financing, so something.
Tell them we provide traffic control.
So, that was the feedback.
Tell them we'll vote for them again.
So, it was so easy.
Just, just one more thing. The town is, um, council is proposing a vision committee, there'll be a workshop in, on September twenty-first at the library at one o'clock, and we're looking for community members, um, who are interested in what they would like to see Killingly be in the future. And that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
You got one.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you, everybody.